Cell phones off or muted if you would. Time being just past one o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Wanda.
Here.
Joe.
Here.
Dan.
You.
Don. Jerry.
Here. Quorum is present. We'll move on to item number three. Does any commissioner have a reason to abstain for a financial or a non-financial conflict of interest?
No.
None.
I do not. Item number four is approval of the agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Healy, second by Fox, to approve the agenda as presented. Discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Agenda is approved. Now is the time for public comment. Any citizen care to make a public comment? There being no comment, we will close public comment. Item number five, we'll start with year-end claims, and there are, there is a sheet of printed claims in front of you as well.
Move approval of claims.
Second.
Motion by Healy, second by Fox, to approve the claims as presented. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Claims are approved. So we will look at the contingency transfers. Which I believe were sent via email.
Yes, I didn't get them done by Friday, by Thursday.
So.
When were they sent?
Yesterday. Nope. If I can get to those. Here we go.
Everybody get them.
So we have a contingency transfer in the commissioners. In the elections, the treasurer, state's attorney. My finger's a little slow here. Veteran service. Juvenile detention. Catastrophic. Weed. And economic development. And if there's a question on that economic development, I wanted to clear that up, that the payment that was scheduled for 2020 was not made until January of 2021. So that is why that shows us 50,000 and not 25. So we did make two payments this year, but one was for last year because we just missed making it in December. And county buildings, the M and PR fund, which is associated with Registered Deeds Office. American Rescue Plan, which would be our federal funding. There's two there. And then that very last page, it will actually be our next motion dealing with ARPA fund transfers. So the contingency transfers were in all of those categories.
You just need one motion for.
Yeah, for the contingency transfer, yes.
I'd move approval of the contingency transfers.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Healy, second by Clemish, to approve the contingency transfers as presented by the auditor. Any discussion?
That we weren't getting second.
I was waiting for.
We have to.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. So that takes care of item number five. Item number six is the ARPA fund transfer. And I know Patty worked with the state to make sure that we're handling, handling these transfers correctly. So the one we're doing today is for $1,328,747. And that is the revenue loss that the state helped us calculate for 2020. And we can use those dollars for essentially any government service.
Is this one in our packet?
It's at the.
It's at the bottom of the document that was emailed, and I think you emailed it separately too.
I got it.
I should have copied it the other way.
So the state had said we can just transfer those funds over into the general fund, but we need to have a motion every time we transfer dollars out of that ARPA fund to document publicly what we're spending those dollars on.
I would.
Well, wait a second. Joe's got a motion from the state, so we make sure we get the wording right.
I don't know how these things.
He sits close and, and I just hand things over.
Suggestion from the state, it's not. They can't tell me what to do.
I'd, I'd move to transfer $1,328,747 from ARPA dollars to the general fund due to loss of revenue for 2020 during COVID crisis.
I would second that very long motion.
So I have a motion and a second to transfer dollars from ARPA to general fund for the discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Motion is approved. So that takes care of item number six. And I don't think we have any official hearings, so we don't have to worry that we're slightly ahead of schedule. So item number seven, budgeted CPI adjustment of 2022 salaries and matrix. Get back over here to those. And I did have Valley put in the packet, our 2021 matrix, our wage scale. And I had her put in a 2022, which shows a 1.2% CPI, which was our budgeted CPI for when we did budget this last summer for 2021. No, 2022. See, it's end of year. I'm going to get my dates all wrong. So for the 2022 budget. And that's your second document there. So I have been asked by some employees since of late, our consumer price index and inflation and such is well above the 1.2% that we had budgeted for. And they did ask if we were going to consider increasing that cost of living adjustment for 2022. And so I felt it probably wise that we discuss it because come January, the end of January is when we will do our first payroll for 2022. And I did talk to some of the other counties about what they are doing. Some are sticking with what they had originally budgeted for. Some are adjusting them upward. And some counties are choosing to, instead of adjusting their matrix to give a stipend for the year to assist. And essentially what that does, it allows you to keep your matrix where it is until we understand what inflation is going to do. Are we going to continue escalating this inflation? Is it going to flatline? Is it going to start dropping off? Because once you make a change to that matrix, it's pretty hard to go back and say, well, we overestimated this year, we're cutting it. I would certainly hate to say that, say you put a 10% adjustment on here and then we have to go back and cut five out. I don't think that that's right to do that either. And we don't have to make a decision today. But I do think that probably on January 4th or the 18th, I don't know, we should push it to the 18th, because payroll usually starts a couple of weeks before the end of the month. I think that on January 4th, we need to decide if we're going to make an adjustment of some type. If we choose to do this, my preference would be the stipend. That we go ahead and we stick with this 1.2% CPI adjustment. And that we would do a flat stipend for every employee that's the same amount. Because what that does is it helps everybody essentially the same. And then we revisit the 1.2% later in the year, going, especially going into 2023. So we would talk about it again in budget time next summer. So I want everyone to consider that. And if you have any comments at this time, certainly you're welcome to voice them.
I like the idea of a stipend. However, how do we do that? Do we pay it all at one time, pay it at the end of the year, pay it the middle of the year? Because what if, if I get my stipend and then two weeks later I go work for Hedro?
You know, I, I am one for giving it all at one time and having faith that the employees have faith in us and they stick with the county. I don't think we're going to have 50 employees just drop out in January, so.
Turner County, because I had emailed the auditors and they did a stipend. And then their first meeting in January is when they discuss.
When or how?
The wages. But they gave, and this is just what they gave is 1,735 to each employee.
Which is a healthy stipend. When you look at our full-time payroll, if I recall right, and it's on my other computer.
140.
It was a million bucks. I think.
I think they were taking that out of the.
Yeah. And, and that was going to be my suggestion is that when we do it, we take it out of the ARPA money. Because again, if we don't use that ARPA money in our designated timeframe, it's gone. So I always think it's wise to use that money first. Any other opinions at this time?
I like the stipend better than the adding it to the cost of living because of, if the cost of living goes down, they're all going to be unhappy when we say we're going to take it back because they will then have budgeted for the new salary.
Correct. And we're in a pickle because our budget is based, is based on CPI of last year going forward. It's no different than when you get your tax bill. You pay taxes for last year on evaluation from the year before. So county government is always to me a step behind, but those are the laws we live in. So trying to somehow between this point and this point kind of bridge the gap a little bit, I think is worth the effort.
I'd be open to that.
Generally, I like the idea of a stipend as well. It's easier for us at the county, but the other side of the coin on that is that there is inflation that affects the wage. And so we're not changing the wage. And very rarely does the cost of living ever go down. It seems like it keeps going up. And so then that does set wages back some as well. So that's the other thing to consider is a stipend is a kind of a Band-Aid to the solution. And if inflation keeps going up and we do adjust wages, we're adjusting them from this point without the stipend being there. Just, you know, so you guys are aware. Because I have seen that where stipends have been used year after year after year. And they almost become like a Christmas bonus, but it doesn't adjust that the cost of living has increased and wages have not kept up with that. So one year, it's not going to be a big deal, but as long as we realize that we got to keep an eye on it.
And to tee off that, and that was my point about during budget, I think within six months, we will know exactly where this inflation is going to be. And a significant adjustment could be made for 2023. And that would address your concern. If we go into the discussion knowing that exact point, we can address it.
Yep, I'd be open to that.
So I will make sure on January 4th, we get that on the agenda. Thank you. So that was, and is Don with us? Not yet. Okay. Okay. So that's item number seven. And so part of item number eight goes with that discussion is declaring all county employees except the commissioners as essential employees. And this goes in with the ARPA regulations. They did give local governments the authority to declare who is essentially an essential employee and who is not. So that is this action item.
That means that.
Hang on a second.
The wages for them can be utilized for out of the ARPA funds.
Correct. That is why we're doing it.
So I guess why wouldn't? If we're trying to use up the ARPA funds, why wouldn't we put even our pay into that? Because then that could come onto the funds as well.
Because there was, go ahead, Deb.
Okay.
And we can't just do salaries. This is not regular salaries. This would be any of the stipends that we name.
No, that makes, that makes sense.
Someone else had actually asked them that question and they did research and I.
Okay.
Somewhere they did not.
Okay.
And they had to go back and fix that.
Well, didn't.
So we won't be getting any stipend.
Didn't one of the I Bailey discussions or decisions or shares indicate that the Lakota, whatever county that is, all of those people got a $5,000, including the commissioners?
I did not see that.
Yeah, they, they were doing, out, out there, they had, there's two counties and one of them contracts with the other county to essentially run government functions. So both counties wanted to give stipends to their employees. So the question became, if you're Patty and she's doing the auditor jobs for two counties, does she get paid twice? And that was what that discussion was about. So because one county wanted to give something and the other county says, we're going to give something. So Patty's working 20% for one, but she gets.
But they also included the commissioners for some reason.
Yes, I saw that. And I think, I think it's better to be safe than sorry. I think commissioners should be excluded. Oh, okay. Welcome, Don.
I would move to declare all county employees excluding county commissioners as essential workers under the American Rescue Plan Act guidelines as they regularly perform in-person work, interact with others at work, or physically handle items handled by others and are considered critical to protect the health and well-being of the residents of each county.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Healy, second by Fox, to declare Yankton County employees except commissioners as essential employees. Any, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. IT. Cue this one up.
Sure. So we had received a couple of bids and then we've got another one we discussed at the last meeting from Anderson Telecom in Yankton.
What are you doing?
We do have a reference
Just listening.
From InfoTech here with us today. So he would like to kind of go through some of this, their quote. Maybe start with that. But essentially, so we're looking at three, three different services. There's InfoTech, Anderson Telecom from Yankton. And IT, what is it? IT operations? IT outlet. All, all submitted quotes or bids for the services. I don't know, Tyler. If you want to kind of go through, I know you contacted us and want to kind of go through your bid. So if you want to come on forward to the podium.
Thank you, Commissioner. Didn't plan on being up here today. I just come down to talk through some of the departments and seeing just some clarity on, on some of the items that we've talked about. We did do the proposal. We had the opportunity to walk through with Gary. On one occasion, so we got to go through all the departments, kind of their needs, what they were seeing and the help that we can provide. We are a cybersecurity firm, so it's not just the IT portion. There's a full cybersecurity. We provide every layer of our services. So again, cybersecurity is the most important thing. And we do for other municipalities throughout the state as well too. So you would not be in our first nor last at that point. Per Gary and for some of the, the other items that are coming down the pipeline, for example, for cyber, cyber liability insurance for the counties as well. We added some of those things in there. So at the face value, it probably looked like we're substantially more, but I'd like to break down what that means a little bit. And then from my conversation this morning, it sounds like the sheriff wanted to pull back out of that. So in the car, I did some soft numbers for the commission to kind of see what that would be like now without them being in there. Maybe I'll just start with the monthly and just kind of go through that. And that might just be the most impactful. We, we quoted everybody. So the sheriff's office, extension, highway, emergency management, EMA. So everyone had a portion of that pie. And we really broke that back down into mostly Excel file a little bit, but without a little bit of clarity, probably was hard to read. So I understand that. And that was kind of what Gary wanted though, is just kind of overall arping for everybody. And we can absolutely break that down later on if needed, if that's what the commission wants. So the tech watch that had dropped substantially, so that went down 22 at that point. So that's a reduction of $660 off of that one light item. The tech watch serverless maintenance deployment, that's going to be for the extension and emergency management. And we kind of talked about a plan over there, Paul, that those could be reduced as well too with some different methodology that we can work with. So again, right now, we're not going to quote it as lower just because we don't have that plan set in place. We're going to take it over and then work backwards. And that's with everybody's department as well too. Especially when we talk about servers and stuff like that, we're going to, we have a plan to reduce those numbers quite a bit as well. One item that you're more than likely not paying for. And again, these are not all brand new items or they may be brand new items, but there's a more secure way of doing it. And that's the firewalls. Every location does have a firewall, but it's matter, matter if you're paying for a managed firewall. So if you do have a monthly payment on that, or if it's no payment, there's no updates to it. So again, cybersecurity evolves around everywhere at this point in time. And for us, we don't want you to be another statistic throughout the state when it comes to municipalities. So that's where we come into play with our proactive methodology on that. So we have firewalls, there's different sizes. So it kind of depends on how big you are and the throughput on it. But we're reducing that number by one, the $200 one because of the sheriff's office. One item you're probably not paying for, we didn't see any backups at the extension office. So that's going to be a new line item there too. Rule of thumb, you need to have backups and multiple levels of backups. So again, added some of those things that maybe at face value is, is not coming across. Tech watch server, we're dropping those off too as well. We have four of them here in this location. We can probably reduce that and reuse some of those resources as well. So that could come down even more, but right now that's down 300 with the sheriff coming out. Access points were down $140 on that one because they're substantially reducing that over at the sheriff's office. Managed data backup. And that was something that Gary talked about. As an organization, the county had determined that your recovery time objective, if your server goes down, has to be within 24 hours. And right now, we don't feel that that's physically possible because you have one domain controller. You have one for encode and you have two VMs, virtual machines off that encode. At that point, if your domain controller goes down, whoever's connected to this building, which is going to be everyone here plus highway are not going to be able to log in until you get that new piece. Was that a motherboard? Is that, is that a power supply? Is it all, you know, your redundant hard drive, single hard drive? So hard drives will fail over, but if you have a motherboard issue, you're done. Essentially dead in the water. And we don't see that happening. And that's where that managed data backup comes into play where it can fire up and get you running and get to your payroll and get through some of those essential items to kind of circle back on that to get you going. But if you guys are, the commission's fine saying, hey, we understand the risk. Those go away. So that's again, now we're down 113, $1,310. Assuming that you know the risk that you're going to be down more than 24 hours and there's nothing that we can do about it until we get that part in, installed and up and running. So again, there's some continuity that we're building into this too and not just saying, hey, we'll take over exactly what you have. Because there's, you know, again, per our conversations, Gary, there's, there's improvements that we could take over right now at this point and include that with our, our setup costs. Managed network devices, we're dropping one of those off. Essentially, that's a switch. Office 365 mobility and security. So we're talking about, there are a lot of different people on the office platform. It might not be through the email, but again, bring in continuity and utilizing SharePoint and your Office 365 apps as well as your email, having that under one. So we have Office 365 under one. So it comes back to a little bit of security as well. Let's say you have a disgruntled employee, they, they quit on a Monday morning. You send that email out saying, hey, we need to reset passwords now. And that's a matter of seconds for our team to get on, log into your, your equipment from remote and being able to change those passwords. So they're not able to be unattended inside their, their Office 365 platform. The mobility and security is pretty much enforcing multi-factor authentication across the board. We didn't see that really anywhere. That's going to be something coming through your cyber liability insurance. They're going to say it needs to happen. And this is one level of about 10 that they're going to make it mandatory for you to do as a county. We're starting to see them come through in the private sector. The ag industry is just a matter of time for it comes up to here. So that's a pretty minimal line item in the grand scheme of things, but we dropped 15. Office 365 business standards. Not everyone has to be at that one because now we're at 77, but not everyone has to have email and apps. And that's kind of the last line item I talked about inside of the RFP is not everyone has to be at the same level. So once you get into Office 365 platform, you either have email and apps. You can have one more secure that maybe the auditor has that deals with the money. So they have to have encryption built into theirs. And you might need to have one just for maybe the maintenance guys that just need to have email. They don't need to have anything else. So those levels vary, but without being able to access that equipment or that platform on the day we were here, we're unable to give you a hard number on that one. We're just happy you were able to come and get some soft numbers for you, but without getting and seeing the whole thing through Craig's passwords and some of the other, other items, we're just unable. So this, the 90 goes down to 77, but that's still a soft number for us on where that individual lies inside the organization. Office 365 backups, you're probably not paying for those either. You know, no one's emails getting backed up. If they're utilizing SharePoint, that's not getting backed up. Again, backups upon backups, we need to be having a continuity plan there. And last, but very not least, we are, have that defender plan one. Essentially what that does, it scans all emails for bad URLs, impersonation URLs, impersonation emails. So for example, I gave in mind, they tried to add another L in my Tyler. It catches that before it gets to this little clicky finger. So not even given that opportunity for someone to do it. So again, these are items that we've implemented across our other organizations and, and we take cybersecurity very, very real. It's not just being able to call someone and help. Yes, that's a portion of it. Don't get me wrong, but we are that Venn diagram of cybersecurity, IT, we're the middle of that. And we've, like I said, we've done with four organizations throughout the state already. In addition to the other 11 towns throughout the state of different various sizes. So we've, we've seen the needs for, for everyone. And code is a Tyler technology platform. We're very familiar with them. All this equipment you have, yeah, we, we understand it. I guess that was a long way of saying, there's a little bit of differential on some of the stuff. Hardware, we're dropping that down quite a bit as well too. Just dropping their stuff off, came down, brought that down to roughly 3,500 for the hardware one-time costs. We run a straight monthly platform at that point. Doesn't matter if you call in one time, 10 times, 30 times. If it's done remotely, it's all under your flat rate. As I said, in the RFP, we had 1.5 billable hours per the four counties last month. So it gives you a good idea that our numbers do not fluctuate. The only time they're going to fluctuate is if you bring a new employee on or drop an employee or a PC. I guess there were there any questions? We have a team of seven individuals that will be on call all the time. We have the same holidays, actually less holidays than what the county has. We have our standard. Day, Fourth of July, Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year. Otherwise eight to five are there and we're also staffed on the weekends if needed at an hourly rate, but very rarely does it need to happen.
Are all your staff housed in Madison or they?
They are all housed in Madison, but we have, can it just be contingency plans that they need to be back in Madison if you're on call that time within a couple hours. But we have clients again throughout the state, Rapid, Pier, Bismarck. We have clients down here in Yankton as well. So after initial installation, very, very rarely do we have to go anywhere. For example, the Rapid location I've been on for six years now. We've been out there once. So again, it's always, we can do 99.9% of our stuff remotely, especially with the equipment that we have. And then we can see all that and is managed through the cloud. That's why we have some of the additions on the hardware quotes. Yeah, you have switches, but we're able to see if they're up, they're down. We're able to tell through the firewalls that, you know, we're, if you have internet or not. So we'd be calling your ISP saying, hey, the county doesn't have it at the, the government building, but we see it out of the highway. We can narrow it down to there or we don't see it at emergency management. But we see it over maybe at emergency managed services. So we now know it's down to the building location and it's on our hardware. So we have warranty built in on some of our hardware for like the firewalls. So if those go down, that's our responsibility to take care of them. No cost to the county. But again, cybersecurity is our, our main, main item. Yes.
So did you have an updated monthly cost figure?
Very soft numbers. Like I said, I did one in the parking lot and I'd be more than happy to provide a more accurate one once I'm at a computer.
Just a ballpark because your original was almost 10.
Yep. And like I said, it was across the board. I have it written down here. So minus my numbers that I see were down under six, five, nine. And we have a lot of counties, they split it up for department as well too. So the highway has their own billing for number of computers and firewall. We've also seen it saying, hey, the email address, the code dot Yankton dot SC dot US is kind of a county deal. We're going to put that out of the main fund that the auditor controls, but we can build out accordingly. So I guess however the county wants to do it, we're more than happy to accommodate.
Any questions for Tyler? Appreciate you coming down.
I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sheriff, I have a question for you. What, what group do you use?
Our main system is
Sure, sure.
They're now Central Square, which is the multi-national.
Sen- Central Square, okay.
They can't touch that since
We make sure they talk.
Should.
Make sure it's updated for other, other organizations that have the top folks in Congress. We make sure that Verizon's involved. Making sure that stuff works in the environment they want. We don't touch it, use the absolute right. And like the encode, they add their server. We make sure that there's a one-way communication back. So if Zirker gets breached, it's not coming into your environment. How the technologies gets breached, which never happens. Make sure that we have our thing set for this where it's not able to come back and stop the side of that. And that's just one of them. Moving to the offices.
It's so faint. Can you hear?
Just not at the microphone.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Other discussion.
Outside of just this, I, we had asked Craig to take a look at, at our options, I guess, and, and kind of review these. And he gave, you know, just his kind of, I guess his overview or understanding and, and Dan and I met with him this morning just to see. And I know with InfoTech, there's some things that, you know, obviously they were quoting probably more showing all the options that we don't necessarily have to take at all or where there's duplicates, but you know, he, he felt that there was pluses and minuses to, to both of them, obviously, or all three of them. InfoTech kind of had the knowledge, working with other counties. So there's some pluses there. He felt IT, their, their staff level, number of employees was obviously a plus. As far as redundancy and, and getting help. And you know, then with the Anderson Telecom, just having somebody in town local was a bonus. I don't know if that was kind of takeaway. I guess I, I think he felt all of them would be acceptable. It's just kind of what do you need and, and what do you not need?
Craig was very willing to help anybody that we decide transition, which I thought was very nice of us.
You know, one, one thing that was brought up is if we're going to, if we're going to get the higher, higher dollars to employ somebody to think about. I don't, I don't think he probably maybe wants to say pick these guys type of deal, but you know, I think he just gave his honest, honest opinion, I guess. I think InfoTech, he thought probably was more than what we needed. There again, it could probably be pared down some too. That's kind of the gist I got out of the conversation. He did feel Anderson was capable of handling our, our situation too, or our, our county needs. Especially with, if they added somebody.
Any other thoughts? Questions?
Have we been having that many IT problems?
Not a huge amount. I think at the last meeting, we had discussed about the number of hours Craig had spent here over the last couple of years. So it wasn't, it wasn't like we were having catastrophes every day. Et cetera.
One, one thing that we talked about was like, oh, I don't know the verb, it's the managed accounts. He said he, Craig, today, today does not bill for that or, or doing that. And that essentially, and Tyler, correct me if I'm wrong, make sure your, all your software's got the latest update. So that's something that we currently don't have or don't. And I don't know exactly how. I know when he comes through, he, he, I don't know if the employees.
We call him. If there's like a patch or are you talking about like patches and stuff? From encode? Yeah, we call him and then he just does it remote. Remote.
Right. Right. So that's something to, to consider. Whether we need it, whether we don't need it, whether we feel we need it. You know, that, that is in both InfoTech and, and IT proposals. I think in general, wherever we land, I think we do need to kind of focus on just ensuring that our security is, is where it needs to be. And I think Craig's done a fine job, but I think it's about like anything else. There's his way of doing it. This person has their way of doing it and this person has their way of doing it. And so just making sure that that transition is, is secure. And I think from the head, department head meeting, we want, want to get away from as many servers as we can. We talked to Craig about that too, and he went down that path with Paul. There were some old Excel files that were preventing it, that something that can be overcome. It just never really was followed through on. Some of the servers were, were going to be stuck with. So.
So at the last meeting, we had tentatively decided we were going to do a six-month trial with Anderson Telecom. So at this point, has anybody changed their path?
No, I like, I kind of like the idea of at least giving a try to the local people and then if it doesn't work, obviously. I'm pretty sure InfoTech will still be there in six months.
I have the same thoughts that I, I think every one of them's going to be capable of handling our solution or our managing our county for us as far as the IT goes. You know, Anderson's done some work with different departments and the department heads ultimately, I think, felt the most comfortable with them. I know Sheri, you said it before and I have too. We, we don't use it on a day-to-day. And so I think, I think our, we have to balance our, our two priorities is, is overall security and then making sure it's somebody who interacts with the department heads. How they like and, and not saying that any of the other two companies wouldn't be fine. We just know that we've had some relationship with them and it's, it's worked.
So with that said, I would entertain a motion at this time unless there's further discussion.
I think Joe should make the motion. He's been making them all so far. They seem to be in writing right in front of him.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I move that Joe make the motion.
Well, I would move that we pursue county IT work with Anderson Telecom for the time being and, and reevaluate in six months.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second to go with Anderson Telecom and re-evaluate in six months. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. And that was our last action item on the agenda. So at this time, I will open it up for public comment. If anyone cares to make a public comment. Public comment is closed with none. Items for next meeting. You already got the one from this one. Any, any other items we need to add to next meeting because it's next week, right? Wow. It is January next week. Well, if you do have them, we need to get them done tomorrow.
You have your
Early. Because it's, you've got another short deadline this week.
Yeah.
That's what I thought because of the holiday. So, all right. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Motion by Fox, second by Clemish to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. We are adjourned.